I'd have it on your desk quicker than the p- the drive.
See, that's what they keep telling us that they want.
Yeah, but they don't do it.
No. See, that's what annoys the heck out of me. Hey Doug.
It's three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting.
Oh, I better turn off my fine maker.
If you have one of these devices, please turn it to silence so we don't get very loud during the meeting. And, uh...
Ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Hello?
Chairman.
Call them, these been called to order if you'll join us for the pledgity meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody in the audience wishes to address the board, there's our forms to fill out back there and we'll bring them up here and hand them to the gentleman and, uh, Fisher. Uh, yes. Now, follow the rules. Our district attorney is here, Anthony Pugh.
Thank you, Anthony.
Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Snyder, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Fairley, and August, for your approval. We have people that wish to address.
Yes, I have two cards at the moment. Uh, first, Jim Brand, Avalon Lake Circle. HP Storm Lakes System. You're on five minutes, Mr. Brand.
Thank you and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I'm Jim Brand, Hampton Park HOA Resident Board Director, residing at 10154 Avalon Lake Circle in Hampton Park. This afternoon, I mean, I am speaking to you in my capacity as the Hampton Park HOA Resident Board Director on behalf of the residents of Hampton Park. Hampton Park Storm Lakes, I and members of the Hampton Park Storm Water Management Committee met with the administrator and staff of South Florida Water Management District on Tuesday, November fourteenth, just a couple of days ago. Some background, you all know this, we pay taxes to Gateway Services CDD as a line item on our Lee County Property Tax Bill. Effective with January of 2018, we will be assessed by the HOA for operation and maintenance of the storm water management system and all the other assets associated with that system. We will be paying double for these services. HOA assessments and taxes to you. We had a great discussion and we learned a great deal from South Florida Water Management, Administrator and her staff. The current Hampton Park Storm Lakes permittee, the developer can, and this is in the words of South Florida Water Management District, that can request transfer of the operation and maintenance entity at any time. South Florida Water Management District would determine the qualification of the HOA Hampton Park and then make the transfer. This is in the words of South Florida Water Management District. They indicated that many HOAs in southwest Flori- southwest Florida manage storm lakes. Then we talked about the transfer of the storm lakes from the declarant to Gateway Services. They stated that the lakes were certified by the design engineer as fully in compliance with the design on November third, 2016. They stated that they inspected the lakes, they South Florida Water, South Florida Water Management District inspected the lakes and found them in compliance. It was a drive-by inspection. Drive-bys my term. I asked them if they checked the elevation. I told them that the water, lake water behind my home, if you went out four feet, it's supposed to be a four-to-one elevation, you go out four feet, it's up to my armpits. "Oh, Mr. Brand, we don't get in the water. We don't check the elevation." "What about litorals?" "Oh, we don't check for litorals either." We take the word of the design engineer that everything is in compliance. South Florida Water Management indicated that a transfer order had been issued to Gateway Services CDD on November third and that you had thirty days to respond and no response had been received. Coincidentally, I did a public records request of Gateway Services CDD and I was sent two transfer orders. One dated November third and one dated 2016 and one dated November fourteenth, 2017. My, why? So, does that mean you now have until, uh, December the fourteenth of 2017 to comply with that transfer order? They told us that they should have sent you a non-compliance notice after the November third of 2016 notification. They didn't do that. We, they never told us why. We, we asked, but there was no, no response. Hampton Park residents need Gateway Services CDD's help in navigating the process with Southwest, South Florida Water Management District. Multiple transfer orders? Storm Lake Systems in full compliance? Process is followed correctly? Question mark, question mark, question mark. No notice of construction defects according to South Florida Water Management District? Is that true? You all didn't put them on notice that there were construction defects of Hampton Park Lakes and the Hampton Park Storm Lake System? On and on and on. Hampton Park residents want Gateway Services CDD to operate and maintain the Hampton Park Storm Lake System. Hampton Park residents do not want to perform that. Gateway Services CDD manages and operates and maintains all the other lakes in Gateway. You should do ours as well. Therefore, I will not, I've got one more paragraph, Chris. Give me some leeway, sir. I, therefore, I will not, on behalf of Hampton Park residents, respectfully request that you all have a motion and pass acceptance of the Hampton Park Storm Lakes today. I don't think it's time for that. I think you all have lots of work to do to make sure the lakes are properly built and turned over correctly, no matter what the incompetence might be of the other agencies. Thank you very much for your time.
Our second speaker.
Yes, um, me and my husband and I went to, um, two of the three committee meetings. And I'm here for the presentation, but I'd like to give you, um, my concerns, which I felt have gone unanswered by Lee County schools, okay? I'm speaking strictly about the traffic. We asked for a traffic report and you were the only ones that told my husband it was one done in 2007. When I asked them at the, at those meetings, we were just told one was done. Things have changed a lot in Gateway since 2007. I have concerns about the traffic and the children that are gonna be on this road. No one, including the school bus drivers, who stop at railroad crossings, stop at the crosswalk. This week, there were three children on Griffin Drive and the older children have earbuds in, they don't pay attention, and I had to yell at two of them because they were gonna get hit. Three school buses went by, not one of them stopped. And I'm not talking about being on the sidewalk or in the grass, I'm talking about feet in a crosswalk. I stood outside last year and I gave the information to the school department, the committee, sixty at the elementary school at seven fifteen in the morning, sixty-three cars, three school buses, and I'm in the crosswalk, a couple of times having to back up, not one car stopped. I'm really concerned and I don't appreciate anyone on those committees saying to me, "Well, there has been no accident." Well, maybe not, but if you came out here and that's all I requested, that someone come out here and take a look at this. They're twenty-three deep waiting to get on onto Gateway. Now, you're gonna put a school up with one thousand to two thousand students is what the original plan was and nobody's going, nobody is interested in what that impact is? Everybody on Griffin Drive only has one way in and one way out. You try to get out here now, it's tough. Wait till that happens. I think those things need to be addressed. It's a real concern and I was a teacher for thirty-one years and I'm scared for the children in this neighborhood, I really am. Thank you.
I'm Saint Son, Mr. Speaker, 15200 Little June Circle. I still have no idea where the entrance to the school is. I'd like to know where the entrance to the school is gonna be, whether it's gonna be on Griffin Drive on eighty-two. Wanna know what kind of barrier is going to be built between Magnolia Lakes and the school? Whether it's gonna be a wall or a fence or a two-foot fence, a ten-foot fence, or, you know, an honor system, what, what kind of barrier is gonna be built? I hear that the high school's already over budget. The budget, I've heard that the budget that was submitted was two years old and it's already over budget, so without me in the script, the project is being scaled back or canceled. And, um, with the hurricane this year, the property where the school is gonna be flooded and that water flooded, flooded into Magnolia Lakes. So, how many retention ponds and what kind of, what kind of water mitigation is going to be, uh, constructed on this site so that when we had been with another serious storm, we don't get flooded? We get, lose our electricity. Thank you.
All right. Um, I had a request that, uh, before the engineering council, that we moved the presentation of the future high school to this program example, this movement before everybody else. So, everyone's agreed with that, what just happened with the presentation?
And I guess, Madam Chairman, so that when Marilyn's doing the minutes, it's, the board agrees to move item three D up before, uh, three A.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you heard some of the concerns, you might, you know, address those, so we can have answers to those questions.
Well, the presentation's, is this mic on or are this?
Should be on.
Well, good afternoon. My name is, uh, Mark Moore. I'm the director-director of operations for the student district of Lee County. I'm joining you today with Mr. Peter Davis, and he's the director of development and PRX for the student district. Uh, we appreciate your time today and I do appreciate the comments. Uh, in our presentation, there'll be some moments where we can interrupt, but, uh, but we'd just like to jump in and start. The presentation will include the following items, the site itself, if you're not familiar with where we're planning to build the school, we'll go over that. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about the prototype campus and building that we're looking to build, uh, the development timeline, and why it's beneficial to have a school in your community, uh, the programming that we have planned for this school, uh, the staging plan for the students, uh, as well as mitigating some community concerns I'm sure that you all have, uh, as well as what the current status of the school is and what our next step is. I think we're gonna give you a very broad and high-level overview of the high school. I'll be honest with you, some of the questions that were asked, obviously, will be worked out as we develop the plan. And part of the plan is to have community input, their concerns are very important. A lot of these things are actually addressed by our partners, our civil engineers, our architects, and they're deeply involved with the designing of the school, as well as developing the site. So, I will not stand in front of you and profess that I'm an expert in these areas. I might have a degree in architecture, but I certainly don't know how to mitigate all of these issues that we brought forward, but they will be heard. Um, so, we'll go ahead and start. Uh, the site is fifty-five acres on the corner of Griffin and eighty-two. Very happy to see eighty-two being expanded down further west. Uh, that has to be considered in our plan because our school sits right on eighty-two. So, we have been working with the State Department of Transportation and, uh, Lee County DOT in regards to the site. To be honest, we haven't go deeply in because we don't really have a contractor, the civil engineer for the project as of yet, and that should happen within the next month or so. Uh, and as far as traffic's concerned, we realize that is a big concern here. Uh, I'm not a traffic expert, but we certainly have experts that will look at the issue and determine where the best locations for things are, actually will mandate to us where we need to build them. So, again, a lot of these decisions aren't made by the school districts, they're made by the partners that we engage with and engineers. Um, the fifty-five acres, just to give you a little overview, we typically like to build schools on at least forty acres. Uh, we have a pretty good-sized site at Benning Spring High School, it's seventy-six acres, which ten of it is, well, actually fifteen of it is in preservation, so we really can't touch it at conservation. Um, that site also has, uh, some challenges with the shape, so we had to lay out things for that school a little bit differently. And this is an odd-shaped site as well, but, um, has a lot of opportunities for citing things appropriately to the community. Uh, so forty acres is our minimum. Just to give you an example, uh, South Fort Myers High School is built on thirty-seven acres, which is a very tight site for us. Uh, gives us very little flexibility chewing traffic off of the roadway, which is a big aden- advantage when you have, uh, high schools, um, and also the ball field, you know, place an event. So, this gives us a lot of flexibility and we're believing that this site provides us, uh, some good ways to lay out the school, so it's, uh, maybe it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a clean path. Uh, and I just wanna go back to that last slide, the selection of the site, we had two sites that were conducive in the east zone. We have our student district broke up into two zones for same assignment purposes. Uh, this site, as well as the site that's out on Bill and Calco, have both located in our east zone, which has the most, right now, growth at the high school level. So, it was imperative that we build a school soon to address that, that need. Thank you. Um, so what would the school look like? Again, we still have not brought an architect onboard for this project, but we did develop the prototype campus that you see down at the East Spring High School. Uh, we did change the capacity of this school, so it's a little bit less than what we're planning to do here at Gateway. Um, and I'll get into the details of the building, but they're going two floors on that back academic building. The school here in Gateway will most likely have three, unless we spread the campus out a little bit more. But this is a great departure from our other schools that we've done around for at least in the last ten, fifteen years. A lot of us live all under one roof. And what we've decided to do is break the buildings away so that we can encourage north to east. So, for instance, in this picture here, on the right side of that campus is the gymnasium and cafeteria. On the left side is the auditorium, and in the back is where the academic building is. The centerpiece is the, uh, university of offices. Uh, this school during the weekends and nights can be locked, and you can wear sneakers, parkas, and even wigs that you can use, uh, parking, uh, as well as some of the amenities such as track, softball fields, cricket ball courts, tennis courts. What we're locked by the way is to encourage the community to, 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 to build tax very much, and it should be a good, a good, to enjoy just as much as our students do. So, that's, that's the evidence for why we broke down that design. If you look at Allen Field High School, it requires you to enter the school to get these arcades and the gymnasium, it's part of our security, and, um, that's just what we do since we're already going to do this. We're really happy that we're able to change the design and make it more beautiful. So, a bit of background on the, the prototype school, it is based on the Benning Spring High School, so it'll be, we'll have to keep our expectations at what it seems, uh, when it's fully enrolled, it won't be that way for a couple of years, if you'd like to ramp up a moment. Uh, some of the amenities are state-of-the-art science and technology labs, sciences that science and STEM, something you're, you're, your degree is hard. Uh, it's very important, particularly in our community, so we're looking to have the facilities to offer the students a world-class education and all that. And we have a full athletic field and facilities. Um, that meeting, we have baseball, football, soccer, soccer, the MOPU on the football field, uh, tennis courts, basketball courts, uh, all track, long jump kick, high jump kick, all the traditional things you see at all of our comprehensive high schools. Uh, and lastly, specialized learning space tailored to academic programs. Yeah, at Benning Spring High School, we brought in some very innovative programs that require a particular type of safety feature, so we create four categories, um, and we have a lot of specialized equipment that we'll have in the design of those spaces as it's key as well. So, the timeline, right now, we're, we're going through the permitting, and the biggest issue that you have right now is the onshore of, uh, the engineers, their permitting process is very lengthy, up to two years. So, we started the permitting, uh, permitting process on the property. Our next step for this year is district planning and design, correct? As soon as we get the architects under contract, we're going to charge them, uh, with developing a charade that involves all stakeholders. Peter D., we'll have some representatives from this community on that charade and really listening to the stakeholders' needs and what they'd like to see inside of the high school. While we have the prototype, there's a lot of flexibility at the layout, we work on the site, the interiors, how do we plan that out, what do you want to see in that building? The purpose of that charade is to get that input, so we are potentially designing and also, uh, build a building that's used for us, all of us, through your group. Uh, program development, so next year, we're gonna finalize the type of programming, academic programming we have in that school. Uh, so we'll have a traditional, uh, extracurricular program that we do all in high schools, but the program will actually drive how we plan our station. Facility design development, that's when we actually get down to drawing, uh, what do we try to build size? A lot of those things that dictate how we build classrooms come from the Department of Education and Specializations, and it requires based on the student station count. On the count of classrooms that we have in our area, will also determine how big they should be, uh, and will also dictate how we build it, materials that we use, uh, so we, we build buildings through X F requirements, but we're pretty strict. We sometimes remember that our target school is coming in our, in our, in our levels of buildings, but, uh, we do. So, there's some additional cost, but we're confident that the buildings that we build will be structured sound and have a long life span. I did mention in this presentation anywhere that, uh, emergency operations of the county is considering using this particular school as a shelter. So, they will participate in the design and, uh, put some requirements out there, some hardened structures, and provide generators and other things that emergency shelters have. I don't, I don't know if that's a definite, but that's something they're ready to consider down, and they're not talking to us about. So, they will be engaged in the designing of this school as well. Uh, we learned that regular principals onboard early on and developing a high school is key, uh, because they're, they have the vision and they have the dream of what they want the school to look like, and if you bring it in after the design, it's too late. So, we're really pushing our superintendent to allow us to select the principal, who can engage in the community as well as all the students, rather than just a middle school, to help design a program that meets their needs and, uh, as to us. So, hopefully by the end of next year, we'll have a principal, they can be to the community and present their vision for the school as well. Uh, two thousand, as early as 2019, you might start to, from site until this site work, um, and then we'll begin to, to, uh, one of the two things that we want to do is make sure the community, uh, knows what we're doing, uh, keeping it scheduled, informing the community if there's any major events happening on the site. Since we're not doing this, we have three, three schools close proximity to the site, uh, and we keep them informed that any concrete course, building on concrete course, when they're standing on a tilt wall, that's all important to the community and for what they're on the site. Um, school staffing begins, and that's another two things. We have to start selecting teachers and recruiting, so we have the right to be coming into this school. So, the whole human resource aspect of developing a school, it's not just the construction. So, we look at things in a little bit more comprehensive lens, so while the community might be just the wall standing out and some site work, behind the scenes, we're recruiting teachers, we're building programs, we're, uh, engaging with businesses and developing programming that, uh, really addresses them into the community. Uh, 2020, we'll have school choice availability. If you're familiar with the student district of Lee County, we assign students using a choice system. Uh, it has a lot of incentives for students that live in close proximity to the school to choose it, it enhances their chance of being assigned to that school. So, we'll make that available on their application. So, right now, eight figures are going, uh, in, going those houses, looking at high schools that they want to attend and right on to attend. And in January, we start that whole process in which we select their top choices, and we're going to order nature and science, uh, in May. So, that process for this year, which is, starts in, uh, August twenty-second. There'll be a staging plan, so if students are fresh in class, won't actually be in the school, if that's in class, we'll be asking them to. Concurrent to the building of this high school, we're putting an addition on to the high school and a few new facilities that we have to add on the school. Um, so, the freshman class will actually be going up. The construction will be completed in the fall, uh, July, we're hoping, in twenty-one, uh, when we begin to transition to move in, uh, the freshmen will move in, and then we'll, uh, they'll become sophomores, obviously, and then we'll open up freshmen, so in the fall, twenty-one, we'll have freshmen and sophomores. Uh, we took a glimpse at, uh, the miller projection for that particular year here in Lee County, and we see tremendous growth in high school level. There might be an opportunity where we could have been a full school, I'm not sure yet, but right now we're starting to test them and sophomore. And in 2022, the year after, we will have all good, uh, schools. We'll be at capacity, but the public will be pleased with that. So, that's kind of the timeline you can look forward to. Um, I don't see it changing too much. I did hear a comment that the school is over budget and I, I had to touch it because I have a budget, and you say, uh, we really are changing the way that we do construction. Well, we did at Benning Spring High School, we, we even outdated estimate for school, uh, when the trade was, when we built high and college, never updated it, went out to the board, this is what we're gonna break for, and then started finally designing it, looking at the architect's experience, to find out, there's no way we can, uh, price. So, we really changed how we're doing the, the forty-two year, the size, and how much this is going to actually cost us. Uh, we are going to bring in, uh, the, the, to develop, to develop behind, and we should know a lot of our students are going to be, at that time. Looking at the real time estimate, it's a, it's a contract today, but by the time we bring our board, uh, before the project costs, that would be a very solid one, a moment compared to, uh, the, uh, so, if we have a target, uh, obviously, we'll go off, might do something, do something or not, but we're not gonna have our board do anything, we could have a little solid one. So, you know, we, we made some safety arrangements and, uh, we're gonna do it going forward. So, you know, we always talk about the benefits and there's benefits, there are mutual benefits, but, so the school is, because of Lee County, and I said, we have tremendous growth amongst our student population, particularly at the high school in Lee County in Lee County. So, with the addition of this school, as well as the five hundred seats that we have senior, we'll have enough capacity to seat all the students for about ten, four years. So, early due after that tenth year, uh, after we get there, we'll have a new high school. But for the next ten years, this school will satisfy our needs for the past. Uh, it'll also lower utilization rates that we have of East Spring High School. And if you visit any of the students in Lee County, we're near capacity, we're open capacity. Uh, I will be honest with you, uh, in the most projected model, we're in a precisely million now, and some of the growth kind, it's surprising, because we saw a lot of growth in the state school, in the South County, and the E High area and up this way, a lot of developments, and, uh, so, we have to address it. So, you know, lower the utilization rate in every county school, particularly, uh, Verde, which is one of our biggest schools right now, and E High City, and East Spring High, they're all in year, uh, so, it's not, I'm looking at a school that's buying two thousand students, you know, playing on that school. The new transportation costs, you know, we, we took a look at the students that live in Gateway and where they go to school. A lot of parents would drive their students to school, but we bust them out, yeah. So, we're looking at using our internal transportation stuff, by doing a school during Dayton, so that we're not transporting kids all over Lee High, uh, and Fort Myers, that we were doing Dayton, so we want them to be able to do the walk, to drive themselves, the high school, which would be safe enough for them to do that, uh, but just wanted to use transportation on the ground. So, I said it was a mutually beneficial thing, so what is its benefit to the, to the community? Uh, well, we get a lot of pushback from people whose kids are no longer in the school system. I get it from my mom, who moved up to South Portland, Maine, uh, she doesn't want any of the schools in her area, and I'll always remind her, Mom, we were one of the young kids too, and we named the South Portland name because they had a good school system. And, uh, we just wanna remind people that, we, we benefit from it, and I just feel focused in that area. As a matter of fact, in our research, there's a strong relationship between people satisfaction with the people they live in, when they have a quality schooling, when they, uh, and going on, we had quite a few questions, uh, last time we had a decent, uh, regards to, um, property value. And we think that's it, and we know that people may invest in their home, uh, and things have an impact, whether some people perceive it to be negative or positive, that's a opinion, but of course, the research has shown you that if you have a high-quality property value, that's the increase package. So, let's go through here, what we want to offer the community in our schools. Well, it is from adult net and career education, one of the things that we do want, we do build- Well, Rita's from adult and career education, one of the things that we do want, these buildings to be used after hours. Our students leave by two o'clock, these buildings are empty, we're accessing the club left, right. So you have a resource here in your community that you can use for adult education work, or for your community uses. Uh, after our T V last, you do have, they're in your technology, that's something we want to offer the community and whoever else wants to use those resources. Uh, workout facilities, we all have break, uh, weight rooms, uh, we have tracks, there's a lot of facility that could be used by the community or our recognition facilities. Uh, auditorium space, and I, I know we're going to release some space at the district office for a community meeting. Our, our vision is, the next time when this school's up, we use the auditorium space. That, that's just as much as space that we deserve. And there's a multitude of other things, uh, we need. It could be, uh, human spirit, a lot of people that go out around football team or school. Uh, we see that in this high school, and you know who has the pushback initially? We really got a lot of good ideas, we're really happy with what happened down there, and, uh... Uh, and we've talked about opportunities for mentoring and volunteering. We've got a strong volunteer movement in students who live in Lee County, lots of people involved in our schools. This will give that opportunity to do that, kids, uh, could be classically, it could be athletically, a lot of our students are doing it mentoring. We have a lot of great resources right here in this community, a lot of people from various backgrounds, professions. I think it would be a priority plus to have a certain large, the likes of our students, someone who will very need, don't have that on. And I will go again and then on that property value thing, but I challenge you to go look at the research and see what happens to property values when you have a quality school. I believe we will have a quality school where I, I tell you, the types of kids that live in this community are very highly treated, treated. I'm going to turn it over to Rita now, she is the, uh, academic programming group for the district, so whether she's going to be there.
Good afternoon, thank you all for allowing us to be here. I said to the department of the school district, um, career and technical education and also the adult education. And when we came about the process of design and academic programming, including the spring, spring high school, we did have a principal in place, so we built an eligible. And we had different teams come together and, um, come up with needs that we thought would benefit the students and then we pass that on to the principal. So we're going to take that same approach with the high school in Gateway. And one of the things that my team and I look at, the career and technical education side, we look at which career academies have always benefited our students. Do you know the location of the school in our region, a five county region? And then we also look nationally, with the hope that that will extend internationally as well, globally. So it involves us looking at workforce trends, career sort of South Florida, as well as the state of Florida. So what jobs are going to be high skilled, high range jobs in the next five to ten years? We're not doing that right now because we still have a few more years before we'll actually implement those academies. But we do have some key areas of academies that we know, uh, we believe we will implement. We have a principal onboard sooner, but of course they will, um, help to decide whether or not we implement those. So information technology, we're looking at areas of cybersecurity and artificial intelligence. And what we try to do with our certain academies is we look at our surrounding schools, we're towards known, and we don't want to be completely any specialized program, you know, academy. Because then it can be an attractor for the school. Now, an attractor is really not given to you for the school because you're already in either the end of the world and you need capacity very early on. But we want to offer unique programs within a zone so that students and students have choices. Um, we will have Army ROTC, we believe we will, we have a very strong, our, our program throughout Lee County. And we're actually in very, very initial conversations we've done about a top plus cybersecurity academy. So what we can do is take the standard requirements from the Department of Education, involve, um, the United States Army, and then we're giving our students, um, skills that they can bring into the Army or out into the workforce because of cybersecurity. Healthcare, you can never go wrong with healthcare, accounting, or any jobs in, in training related to that. So we know they're both some type of special nation. We're doing a CNA program at the Eastland High School, that's a very popular program. We helped fill a lot of the jobs that we helped pass, um, for CNA between our high schools and our secondary institutions, like the technical colleges. So I don't necessarily know that CNA will be in a specific academy, but I do anticipate there's some in, in healthcare. Another area we're looking at, um, is financial services. That's not an absolute definite. Again, you've got to look at our community, we're a lot of hospitality, tourism, uh, we would like to have bigger industry here. But we do have some initial interest in financial services, so we may see an academy involved in that. A come, uh, a few of the key characteristics that I want to drive are, can be very important to us, and those are just pictures from our students. Um, in the top is a, our first certified female welder in Lee County, we're in the high school level. And some of the students in our welding programs, we have a different county, we have Fort Myers Tech, we have an organization, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars a year. This is the high school enrollment, here there certification that we provide in Lee County schools. Our culinary arts program at Sierra High School there at the bottom with, uh, Chef Jeremy Packer. It's on all kinds of doors of competition, it helps to actually bring one in to the program, and then you have students from Dunbar High School on the right that are out of X community, doing a, a creative project. So what really keeps us, what I wanted to drive home about these particular academies, is we're really looking at aligning our academies. It can sound a little complex to me because you're out in the workforce or you're in the workforce, and really aligning them to industries. Instead of just being an isolated schoolhouse that's following the order of standards, we want our students actively involved in our local businesses. So we can create a talent pipeline, uh, and some elements of that flexible work space so that I understand how those working environments are. And then also private learning, which is very, very critical. And then we have a bring the lead for internship. Last year, our students achieved over four thousand new certifications in grade nine and twelve. Only work from Microsoft Office up to welding, uh, auto tag. But what we're working through now in our academy, and what we'll see from here in Gateway, make those certifications work and, uh, allow our students to apply them with internships in our local businesses. So our business partnerships are going to be absolutely key, and we need any of the academies that we can implement successfully. And then we talked, we talked about advanced classes. We, at Lee County, we have Inter-Baccalaureate, we have, um, Cambridge Academy, they're the kind of graders of advanced classes. But what really finally we have advanced equipment, we just can't go wrong. So we believe that that will be an absolute core for academic rigor, um, which is available with or without, uh, for the academy. And then I briefly wanted to speak about extracurricular programming. This is going to be a true community high school. Um, uh, I'm born and raised here in Lee County, but I understand that a lot of folks are from the north, the Midwest, other areas, that community high schools are so key. A critical part of the community and the development of that community. And so that's what we seek to do here, is to interact with you as a community member. Uh, so there will be full programming in terms of athletics, club, again, we, uh, we really want to have Army ROTC here as well, because of a lot of our high schools. So that will be a part of the standard thing, the actual honor society, all those kinds of things that are, are out of traditional.
Thank you, Rita. We talked earlier on about a staging plan, so again, just to reiterate, uh, the fall of twenty twenty, it's being projected open for the freshman class at Lee High School. So the students that are in middle school in two thousand nineteen will be able to select it on their application. Uh, they'll be proximally near the student state at Lee High School. The school itself will be a separate entity, although it will be on the campus of the high, it'll have its own identity. Uh, we'll have a dominant principal and administrative staff, we'll have their own activities, their own teachers. So it's just actually, if you call it Gateway High School, I think we can do that, but whatever school ends up here, it's just basically an iteration of Army, Alpha, and Omega. So getting to the next section, and we can just... So this, uh, yeah, no, you go for it, I'm sorry. The, the possibilities that we can do, and to use to see. So, someone brought up crap. So obviously, one of our biggest concerns is we're starting to do some initial planning for this school. As I mentioned before, it's in a, in a place that could be very congested, congested now, as we've had it quite a few times, the digital site. Um, we obviously will have to make some improvements at that point. Uh, we don't specify what the improvements are, we work with faculty and units, we'll do, we'll do a record on the project list. We'll make those recommendations, we'll register for the E O T and the U D R T to make sure that's appropriate. Uh, if that means we locate the campus and entrance and entrance in different areas to make sure the traffic goes safe, we do that. Typically, we have three entrances and regresses on the high school campus. We don't mix traffic, a bus is entered one way and exit on the same way, so we don't mix it with vehicle traffic. Or, uh, student traffic, we like to have a staff and a belt under one entrance, if you need to do that, same entrance, and then students as well. We like to separate it into three different categories, so we'll spread those entrances out. And I want to also point out the fact that high schools are kind of non-traditional in the way that, uh, they, you know, come in and leave. Typically, you got all the kids in the school by six, forty-five, all of them, also they may just drop off and left the campus. And we have a one thirty-five to six, so it, it, um, it doesn't match the patterns of the cheap traffic here in the time. Seven or five might be a little tricky, I'm just using the reason for it. But they'll be arriving instead of leaving with you, so it's almost a reverse here. So their time will always be different, so, you know, if it was five o'clock this morning, I would definitely ask you to, right, to use form of order, right, to go home to the stadium, etc. Uh, so just to mention that, but again, just to reiterate the fact that all the planes and traffic actually comes in such divisions, like the traffic in the neighborhood that, if you're not seeing it yet. We do, we all have that information, use a public meeting, an average design, so, um, so we'll be opportunity, there's concerns about where we're going to be. We do like that, if you've got, uh... Noise is another issue with high schools. Um, I've never lived close to one, but I, I have attended quite a few high school activities. Um, we believe there will be appropriate siding and athletic fields and bus entry, we can mitigate a lot of that. Uh, we certainly want to keep that within the residential area, if, if, you know, there's a light that throws some ambient light. And you also have the overhead pad, you have the reading events, so, um, when we do place those decisions on this site, we keep that in mind. Uh, at the Gateway site, it naturally helps us to have that eardrops shape, uh, and to put a wave in the, in the, in the, in the thing. Uh, use of natural bumpers when we can, trees and land to the ground, we think we all, we always consider, we'll be doing that at, uh, Lee Springs High School on the Hawthorne side of things. Uh, highway noise barriers, I know that you all are looking to do that here in your own community, and you want to partner on that on the E O T stretch. Uh, and limited P A use on street level. High schools typically don't have, we just already, we live close to the elementary, so they use their public announcement system on the outside all the time. You're not going to find high schools use that hardly at all. You might hear it during a football game on Friday night, but typically, that's not commonly on high schools. Uh, we talked about light, and, um, we know that there is a lot of dark skies ordinances. I'm not quite sure if there's one here in this area. Lee Springs High School has a very strict one, so we have a design lighting, and of course, there's that ordinance. Uh, we are using LED in all of our youth schools, the rec is giving our old ones, LED throws more connectional light. So it doesn't spill over into the residential areas, plus it's more affordable. It's best enough as a product, so we know long term we save money, and also we've got a lot of control over the light. Uh, we also using some of our older stadiums, uh, shields that block the light from the, the, uh... So those are the things that we're wanting to incorporate and we desire to incorporate. Uh, purity safety, when a school is situated in this community and underground, that's what we like. We like to live in the insider community, we, we welcome to be as loose as a community school. And you locate them often from on dusty areas, that's usually a bad message to the students. Uh, so we like them to be in a setting that's conducive to education, gives them an idea of how, we like to prefer light to heat. This is what we think, uh, a fire could do, and this community could do. Uh, but we also know that there's a concern for safety, and I think the concerns are broad-based. We have concern about the safety of our students in the school, this is much as the community might have about the students that live in the community. Um, we have very strict guidelines, uh, as kids, as kids, believing in that. Uh, they don't pick for leave for lunch, they don't leave whenever they want. We have some things that might be, they can even be school early to go to the dual enrollment program at the colleges, or get, uh, with a queue, uh, comes up things. But, uh, we don't let them leave campus. They're there, they're a single front entrance, they're not open to leave the school, it's not an entry, and that's it. Uh, we know that there's a lot of gay communities here, and we know that students will be walking some students, and that's a separate number. Um, but we are going to educate them to walk on the public block, and not through the, the path. We don't have a whole lot of control over that, and we partner with, uh, our law enforcement to secure that. Do you have that? Certainly, Fort Myers, depending, we want to call it an activity. But typically, once the principal's involved and we get the S R O involved, this will, it will address it, and it happens when it's a good time, uh, so it comes to a lot of attention. Um, so we really want to encourage students to use the routes that are planned for them, and we have a fully tenured curriculum, so it's not like they're coming to the bathroom for that kind of, uh... So again, safety is our primary concern, it's number one, it's purity safety number two. So we combine number one and purity number two. Fully secured campus, these schools all have a complete complement of cameras. We don't use them to, uh, supervise students, but they're data for that, it's true, we accept adults to supervise students at that point. But they are fully secured with cameras, perimeter fence fencing, we have, so I just opened up the front of our campus. We all have really tall, chainy centers around the hood, so we just offer that supply. So we've opened up the front of the school, we use it the side of the school as the first line of defense, with a single front entry, but the rest is through the side and always the back of that other door. Every school has a complete complement of security staff led by a sheriff's department S R O, security force officers. Typically, a school with two thousand students, they have up to four security security staff. Each job is primary, security and the school around the block. So what are we doing right now? I already mentioned the environmental permitting, that's already underway, we're already toward a year. I will finalize it, we'll construct, I mean, architectural design contract. We'll be bringing in the construction management onboard for the year after. And we are already, this is one of the two new businesses that we're adding. We also doing, uh, Lee High, and they've formed, uh, a different office as well. And the key needs are an opportunity for residents to share their concerns as well as opportunities for us to learn what we have to say. And the next step is the design charrette, and again, we have people involved in this community. So trying to keep it, if you get a large group, a hundred people trying to design a design charrette and it becomes a little clunky, we're going to try to keep it representative and, or agile. Uh, again, we were talking about academic programming, critical academy development, and we're very interested in business partnerships. Uh, we can't do it alone, school, we're just not working Saturday, we're trying to build new businesses, and all of our partners can make sure of that. So we set up a mailbox, um, that typically just can female concern. Uh, I'll say the pocket monitor is that mailbox, they will respond to any concern or confirm that they put it for consideration. Uh, the bottom site, the L L L is going to be replaced with M M M, I do apologize. And that's going to be the school site, it should be running online shortly, that's the, the temporary site. Uh, but we'll put project reports, uh, news days that we're working on, these are, these are the program, and all of that information will be right there on that site, so we can really keep track of it. So at that point, I just like, I don't know if we have opportunity, if there's any questions, or if you want to take them in a different way, we certainly can.
Yeah, Mark, one of the things that you're into right off the bat is obviously the environmental portion, and we've got a concern with that. Uh, as a result of the, the, of all the rain we had and the, the storm and the hurricane. We'd love to figure out a way to divert if possible, working with your engineers. I've seen some of that surface water head south through Pond eighty-three, which is along the, uh, Magnolia Lakes area. As opposed to sending any more water than we have to send over to, uh, Hampton Park. So if there's any opportunity there, we'd love to, uh, work with you on that.
Absolutely, and a, as a model, we did that in Benita Springs High School with the Hawthorne community. We actually took a lake from the HOA, uh, and it was mutually beneficial to both of us with mitigating water concerns, so definitely.
We'd love to work with you on that.
Absolutely.
Um, I have a, I have a couple, uh, first, Rita, just, uh, while you were standing up. Um, looking at your development, I think, um, from a community perspective and even from a district perspective. If, uh, if you could maybe pencil in some areas like engineering, uh, environmental biology, environmental science. They were in a really unique position here with, uh, water management or utilities and things that we as a district have to offer that I think would, would provide, uh, you know, some level of partnership. Um, as well as a larger engineering type focus, uh, I think Ted and a lot of, there's, you know, quite a few engineers in this room. Um, and so if that's just something you could... And so if that's just something you can pencil in, we could have further discussion on that. And Mark, I love the concept of designing for community focus in a community like this where, you know, budgets can be tight at times. And creating additional amenities can be a challenge. Having a school come in that's going to provide additional, not only amenities, but, you know, facilities that can be leveraged by the community, I think is huge. And that's a great added benefit for residents that may not have students going, but could leverage some of the components of the school. In that same kind of concept, with the community being able to leverage certain facilities, we also have amenities and facilities of our own that could be reciprocated as far as use. And you don't have to necessarily answer this today, but it may be something that you want to jot down as a takeaway. You know, we've got field space that could potentially be leveraged by the school for specific things. Like, we've got a pool that could maybe offer, you know, a swimming program or something if a pool was not in the plan for the high school. With that being said, one point of consideration is maybe allocating dollars or budget or for the enhancement or even some of the, you know, maintenance or use to improve those facilities to meet what the school standards would be. And I would imagine if we have an infrastructure or at least a foundation, it would be a heck of a lot cheaper to leverage or partner with a district on existing amenities as opposed to having to build out if you've got limited space or limited dollars. So that would just be something I would ask you to take away and just, when those discussions come up, either engage Chris or district manager or come directly to staff. At Bonita or in other areas where you are building a new school, do you have a dedicated, like, community liaison? Or is there someone, at least in the beginning, that, you know, that either residents or businesses or entities like ourselves can partner with that serves as that bridge between, you know, the leaders at the school board, you know, Mark yourself, and our residents in order to have a good, open line of communication?
Communication. Yeah. Absolutely. Rita and I are that resource right now, but our planning department serves that purpose for the district, and they're really the lead with governmental affairs. You mentioned shared use. They oversee that part of it within a local agreements. So I can definitely share with the board here that contact would be Mr. Greg Blerton, our planning director. He's a good touch base. But both Rita and I are resources as well. Particularly me being in operations with the construction of the school. But what we've seen is once we've selected a principal, they really take the lead because we want them to be community leaders as well, not just school principals. So there's a transition or shared point of contact for a bit, but I believe once we get the principal selected, that will be your guy or a girl.
Okay. And then just last thing, it's more of a comment. You know, honestly, I didn't really think too much about the high school really bringing jobs to our community. And I think it would be great with the amount of educators and administrators that we have sitting within our community walls, for them to have opportunities to be able to get up, drive a couple minutes to their job that really ties in that community spirit. And I think, I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised, I don't know if surprised is the right word, but I think the community is really going to rally around, you know, having a high school with sports and volunteer opportunities. Whether you have, you know, children going to the school or not, I think that's one thing that Gateway's always done, is kind of rallied around community. So I'm very excited about the opportunity.
We see that same sport at Gateway Elementary.
Yeah, absolutely.
Open transition to the high school as well.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you want to have a question? Or?
I have a couple.
Sir, do you usually appoint your principals from, principals or assistant principals currently serving in the district?
We typically have. We do have a pool of principal candidates that they select from. It doesn't necessarily mean we won't look at outside applicants, but typically, we do promote from within, particularly with a new school as well, because it takes a different skill set to open a school. So, yes, the answer is yes.
Secondly, are you experiencing any significant increase in enrollment as a result of the disasters that we've had in Puerto Rico, et cetera?
You know, we anticipated a big spike in enrollment, but we really haven't seen it. We have seen maybe thirty to forty students from Puerto Rico enroll, but we have natural mobility in our system anyways. But nothing really concerning as far as enrollment spikes. It's pretty much a natural growth that we've seen in the past few years.
You're very lucky because Orlando does not have that answer.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand there's other parts of Florida that are stressed more with enrollment than we are, so we are lucky.
And I do have a question to you. Thanks for the presentation. Very informative, and we look forward to working with you and getting more information if you feel like.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, would you, will you distribute the presentation to the board members?
All right. That brings us to district engineer.
Hey, good afternoon. Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. I'll be your district engineer for tonight. I don't have anything specifically new to bring up. I believe Chris was going to touch on the S R F hearing that just took place under his report, so I won't steal his thunder on that part. But if you have any questions on me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I knew, I knew to look this way.
Look to the left. We've been talking, and I'd ask, and it may be premature, but ask you to prepare a price proposal or proposal for doing some modeling of the hydraulic modeling of the I seventy-five and the tree line structures. We're in the process of putting together a paper that tries to look at alternatives to some of the problems we ran into as a result of the high water, the storm, and then the hurricane, and see if we can avoid that from happening in the future. One of the things that I'm running into that are desperately need to be able to write that report is hydraulic analysis of those two box culverts under four scenarios. One, the five-year storm. Second, the twenty-five-year storm. Third, the hundred-year storm. And fourth, maximum flow rate based on thirty-seven C F S per square mile. What I'm looking for is to find out, good or bad, are those structures causing us what we call backwater and not allowing us to get water out of this community? Because if we start looking at other alternatives like control structures, flexible wheels, adjustable wheels, all the other things that are available to us, if we can't get the water out and pass either tree line or I seventy-five, it's not going to accomplish anything. So we need some engineering work to be done, and I didn't know if you'd had a chance to put together a proposal yet for that, but if not, I'd like to see it at the next meeting.
So the answer is yes, we do have a draft proposal, and it will be at the next meeting.
And you'll be providing that to Chris so he can put it on there again?
Yes, ma'am.
The other one I have is that our H O A has sent to the district, I tried to stay out of it, but the board sent to the C D D a request that we're next in line over there since we're the oldest, to have our storm sewers cleaned and done as Silver Lake saying Stony Brook has had done. This recent rain event showed that age is hurting us. We're thirty years old over there, and I don't know that any of our storm sewers have ever seen the light of day of either a, well, they did, I take it back. They saw a camera. The camera went through them. We've got a lot of blockages, and we certainly have one heck of a lot of inlets that need to be cleaned. I have just finished going through the last of the Morris Riley tapes and putting together a breakdown of all the needs, the manhole-to-manhole sections that are bad, and the cleanup, or I'm sorry, the drain inlets that are bad, and would like to work with you on getting this proposal to do what we did at Silver Lake and Stony Brook, trying to get an idea preliminarily if the amount of money that we have in the budget, which I believe is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, is enough to get Gateway drains done. So I'd like to work with staff and you in getting that going, because the minute that water hits below the control and starts going down below the elevations, that's the time we want to get in there and clean those, so we aren't attempting to do what Pelican did, having to fight the lake levels and deal with all that water. So as soon as those go down, we'd like to have a contract all ready to go, bidding already have been done, and just issue a notice to proceed. So we need to start on that immediately, because I'm going to guess at the rate the water's falling, I'm going to guess tomorrow we'll probably be at control elevation. The two wheels in Gateway are down to less than an inch of water going over them, and that's amazing since it was thirty-six inches just sixty days ago. A lot of water. But I'd like to work with you and work with Mike and Chris on getting that going, because we're anxious over there. We've had a lot of blockages.
Sure. We can definitely work with staff to put together, let's go get it done.
But we did it once, or we've done it twice, so we have the background of how to get it together and put it out for bid, and should be able to do it pretty quickly. But it takes time through the bidding process, and, you know, sixty days will be upon us quickly, and that's when we want to start. So we need to get started on this quickly.
Sure. I mean, essentially, you already did it twice. We did it for Stony Brook, we did it for Silver Lake, so, I mean, the form work of that, I guess, is pretty much done. It's just going to be, like you said, going through the reports and seeing which, identifying which sections need to be cleaned. You're probably going to find that there's a bunch more since the time those pipes were videoed, because that was two thousand and twelve, I'm pretty sure.
About four years ago.
So, but yeah, we can definitely work with staff to put that together.
Go ahead, Mark.
And so to do that, I think, Chris, you want a one holder?
I think he probably needs a scope of the level of effort, and I can get to you and to Chris real quick, a listing of all, I looked at all the cut sheets, went through, identified everything, got it broken down. So it's not like Stony Brook where we had a lot of the issues you all had that were, in some cases, construction-related. Ours is just good, old-fashioned maintenance that hasn't happened for twenty-five, thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just knowing what I know from those reports, I mean, it's probably going to be a multi-year phase project to clean all of it. I don't, I don't think budgetary reasons.
Ours is not all.
For budget, I don't think you're going to do it all in one year.
Yeah, ours, the degree of, and we're, we set the line like we did last time, twenty percent, blockage or greater deserves attention, anything less, we didn't. So I've got them all broken down into pipe size and degree of blockage, and then account on the number of catch bases. So I don't think it's anywhere near as sophisticated as Stony Brook was.
Cool.
Doug, do you have a question?
Yeah, this is kind of a blank question. I'm not sure who can answer it, but kind of speaking to the two individuals that opened up public comments around crosswalks and traffic. When we hand, now that we have handed the roads over to the county, do they look at those crosswalks? And is there anything we should maybe bring to their attention around, you know, school hours or anything? I mean, it seems like to me when, there's not a whole lot of focus of attention, especially there's probably two or three primary crosswalks that I think are of, at potential risk during certain school times.
Their engineers will have to work with D O T on all that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't really know if anything that Gateway can do at this point, because like you're saying, the road's been conveyed to the county, so it's not like Gateway could go make roadway improvements to add signals or anything like that. I mean, I don't know what Gateway could do at this point. I mean, it'd be up to the county, you know, the county sheriff.
County and the school.
So is that something we would, at a minimal, just bring to their attention that there is concerns around crosswalks and making sure that the, whatever standard level of...
Especially since the schools on the opposite side of the street of the sidewalks. So we're going to have, we're going to have to get the kids from the west side to the east side somewhere.
And there's also areas where, you know, you have to cross the street in order to get to another sidewalk or get to wherever, because, you know, we don't have dual sidewalks throughout the community, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I mean, we can give them a heads up. I mean, we can contact with county and say, hey, you know, there's been some issues with these, can y'all take a look, or then y'all can do, we do that much.
Yeah, oh, well, you could take that action under good.
I was going to say, I think rather than tasking our engineer to do that, that should be something the staff, yeah.
Put it to Chris or, and then, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So can, will you make that direction to the staff?
I mean, I don't want to speak to the school board, but I imagine those crossings are probably going to get addressed in their design also, so.
Yeah, but I'm going to, you know, that's, that's future consideration, but we also have current consideration that I think calls it risk, so.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm not sure that Chris is aware of it, or Mike, you heard it, so you'll be working on that. Did anybody have any other questions for our engineer? Thank you very much.
We'll see y'all later down the line here.
Thank you. District council?
Yes, just briefly, the, what I have included in the packet is just a form of a notice for the public hearing on the parks and recreation rates, fees, and charges for the Sherman Soccer Complex. The board needs to, I don't know if the board has, if there's a revised list for the board to review and have available take, once we, when this gets published, the revised list has to be available for the public to view, if they want to ask for it and advance the meeting. We talked about having the public hearing in December, and again, once it hits the paper, we have to have the proposed rates, fees, and charges available.
We have them available to that point.
But we're supposed to be receiving from staff a breakdown of the costs, that I'm assuming is good.
And so all this is if the board would approve the placement of this notice and continue to have the recommended date of December seventh for the hearing on that, and the board could authorize the staff to place the ad in the news press and they'll go forward.
Now, chairman?
What day is that?
It's a Thursday, December seventh.
Yeah.
It's our next board.
It's first board meeting in December. It's the next board meeting.
December seventh, not the second?
Correct.
That was very correct. The last time we discussed this, there was a so-called schedule of rates that was, at least to my old eye, is not legible. And I'm not going to vote in favor of this public hearing until I am in possession of a rate schedule that is legible and understandable.
I wasn't aware that we had approved a rate schedule. We were waiting for the information from staff to make a determination of what rates would be.
Well, how can you have, how can you have a notice of public hearing coming up when you don't know what the rates are?
You have to have that rate scheduled.
The day is still short.
There you go.
The day is still short. Now, what's going to happen today?
Because we're not approving.
We've got to do it yet today if we're going to do it.
Well, then, let's move this back, because I, unless you don't care about my no vote.
Yeah, if you want to, you can put it under the action items and continue it to, again, the action items, so during the recess, the board can review. Michael can hand out the proposed rates.
Let's do that.
And then, in a larger format, for all of us to be able to read, and so the board can review and discuss and decide. I have no problem with that. Yeah, it's a good point. Next, on the Girl Scout building, I don't know if Chris has received the letter yet with the check. The school, Girl Scouts have returned ten thousand dollars of the fifteen thousand dollar deposit, and said that the balance of the five thousand minus whatever repairs they have to achieve will be returned after we repair the holes, et cetera, that resulted from the testing of the walls for the mold. And Chris, I think, has somebody under contract, or Michael, to get that done or not?
We're hiring for it.
Okay. And so that's what they're doing, they're home back five thousand, because we have the obligation to repair those holes.
Put a zipper in them, because the next guy that comes along to buy it's going to do the same, going, it's ridiculous.
They want it put back to where it was, and that's the only holdup there. At the next board meeting, the board may be receiving a request from the engineers for task authorization for a Fifth Amendment to the engineers report for Pelican Reserve, as we have not yet received any response, and we'll be addressing that, is utilization of remaining bond proceeds. So that might be on the next board meeting agenda. And nothing else, unless the board members have questions.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Start that in this night.
When are we going to see the?
December seventh for A E D.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
No, I'm sure.
Oh, it's okay. Um, a tree for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we, the, we took over, Lee County took over the roads.
Took over certain roads, yes.
Right. Okay. Tomorrow, they're coming in to decide what trees have to be cut down for safety reasons. I just don't know if the public knows that there's going to be oak trees taken down.
I did not know that. I don't know if Michael and Chris know that, or...
Yeah, there's twelve trees that are due to be taken down.
Well, there were two that were on Griffin that were included in the original deal to be taken down, and I know on the plans from the project, there were others that were X that did not get taken down. So as long as the trees that they're talking about taking down are the ones that were on the plans that we agreed to, I don't have an issue.
So I think it's a matter for staff to make sure that...
Make sure it's the same ones.
The same ones, yes, the seven of the same seven as before.
Okay.
The Lusson Magnificent Seven, I guess we call them.
I just wanted.
They're not the additional ones that could have had damages below the store.
Could, could have, but I believe they're referring to the ones that were on the plans that never got taken down as a part of the, the turnover.
For the record, Michael Tish, Public Works Manager of Lee County, since they've taken, uh, control of both Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive, they've gone out, um, started looking at the accident reports. Um, I guess it's Commerce Lakes Drive and Gateway Boulevard since January one of this year, there have been thirteen accidents at that intersection already. Uh, the thing they've identified, uh.
Trees blocking.
Is that trees are blocking the sightlines, uh, so, uh, a number of trees have to be removed for safety reasons.
I think those are the ones that were on the plans.
We might have had an, an initial agreement with them, but once, um, I mean, I think it becomes then a liability issue for us if, uh, trees aren't removed.
Well, I guess the question is, did they send us a document saying we're supposed to take this off because they violate sightline requirements, or not?
Yes, they have.
Okay, I mean, when did we get that?
I think we stipulated to that when we did the plans. I think we've already agreed to it in that it was included in the plans, our original engineer identified those on the actual construction drawings.
I think that's important then to clarify, to make sure that what they're talking about.
Same.
Like, are they the same trees?
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'll clarify that with what was identified, uh, by the.
On the drawings.
Engineers' drawings.
Anything, I just wanted.
Anything else for our attorney?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, Area Nine, our famous Area Nine, uh, we went to take samples last week and the, the gate was bolted, uh, but we've worked out that to where we can get back and do the sampling and get our vendors back in there to do the aquatic work. But the issue is, is do we have any update on where we stand on getting that easement?
I've not yet had a chance to, it's a short week, to get with Charles, Charles offered to get together, because then R W C I is gonna be taking that action to require, clarify, clarify the interest, we talked about that, but I'll get with Charles.
Because i- if not, it just looks to me like there's a condemnation in our, in our future. This is ridiculous, we gotta get our vendors back there, and right now, it's just, there's no other way to get there, so just to make sure that's being worked on. The other one is, uh, the outstanding utility accounts, do you have any follow-up, are you gonna do that at the next meeting?
I, I only had knowledge as to the Santa Lou's, I had no knowledge as to any of the other accounts. And I already prepared my memo on Santa Lou's.
We have a bunch, we have thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars, Chris, I think, that's, we gotta get that addressed, thirty-eight thousand is ridiculous.
And again, I think, I don't have any information on those other accounts. That, you know, I, I think Leslie and or Chris or Kenny can put that report together as to the balance, or if you want my input, give me a holiday.
The next one is, is that we're in the process of working out this issue, and I haven't had a chance to look at your memo and, uh, memo from Pavees on, uh, the six turnover roads. But I'm assuming we're moving along with that, but we still have one that's out there dangling, that's in no man's land, and that's Fairway Lakes Office Park. We gotta get that resolved, something's gotta be done over there, and it's not only that issue, they've got other issues within there, and it's all because they don't have a P O A.
Yeah, what I can do, we can, uh, there's other ways to approach it, uh, in, thinking about that.
We need to push, push this.
And whether, yeah, and, and again, again, though, it's unfortunate that the issue was not caused by the district, you know, the dissolution of the corporations is not under our control. I'll resurrect those prior memos I had from last time and see, I'll update it, I think that was two thousand fifteen when we addressed some of those roads.
Well, the, along that same line, and I don't know how many phone calls you all get, maybe you're not getting any, I'll send them your way. Is Commerce Lakes Drive East, where we had the P O A, once again, went belly up, I don't know if you've been down there, I mean, it looks like you're going into a jungle.
I think that, is that called corporate?
They're not mowing the grass.
Is that called Corporate Lakes Drive?
No, it's, uh, Commerce Lakes Drive East.
Because I know I received the email the other day that you sent to Chris, it was Corporate Lakes Drive.
I don't know what Corporate Lakes Drive is, but common, Commerce Lakes Drive East, which is the one that W C I transferred, transferred over to us that first two, three hundred yards, that's not a problem. It's when you go past that, right where we have the brand new pump station, that, it's a jungle, it looks like the dickens, and I'm getting phone calls from the county saying this, this, this can't happen.
You're not talking about this road?
No, talking about this road.
Okay.
It's the old P O A that dissolved, one of the, uh, businesses down there were, was taking the bull by the horn and doing it themselves at their own expense, and they finally just said, heck with this, we're not doing it anymore. And so it's, it's right across from Daniels Preserve, it, it looks horrible. But somebody's got to address that issue.
Again, I can update my memorandum, and the board can give direction.
Okay, do.
As to, there's other roads and Commerce Lakes Drive East. And just for clarification, I know there was a question about Corporate Lakes Drive, that's the email Chris had, that's a functioning viable entity that owns that, that East Lakes Business Park Property News Association. And that's what I included in my materials to, to, uh, Chris, so that's not one of the defunct POAs.
And the last one I had was the, the school parking, I've been getting the phone calls on this one, the school parking on Gateway Boulevard from Brown Academy all the way to Daniels. We might as well be out there with a toothless tiger, because they're just ignoring us, they park out there, they're in the landscaping. Uh, the only thing I know is we take and bring the police in and start issuing the tickets and trespassing.
Was this Gateway Charter?
It's, it's all the schools on that road, it's Brown Academy, Brown Academy is getting really bad.
Well, the difficulty is, we don't own that roadway segment anymore. And.
It's our landscaping, though.
Right, but if they're, if they're damaging landscaping, then we can try to have them charged with, you know, like damaging, you know, potentially damage like criminal mischief, it gets very difficult. That's more of a law enforcement issue, quite frankly, I think. And if it's, if it's a charter school, we have that agreement with the charter school, to the extent we can get them to start taking some action.
That one over like a lead, but it didn't work at all, they're not doing anything.
I think Mike has actually been working on it.
Yeah, I think the sheriff's probably the best.
That's what I've been.
Tool.
Michael Tish for the record, uh, um, that's another thing, we're gonna talk with Lee County D O T about tomorrow, uh, is the parking along Gateway Boulevard. Uh, signage has to be in place first before law enforcement can do anything, so we're going to be addressing those issues tomorrow.
What's those strips the police use that cut the tires?
Spike strips.
Every fifty feet.
Stop sticks.
But there has to be, there has to be signage there first before they can enforce anything, so we're going to discuss that tomorrow.
Some, somebody is going to have a wreck out there with the way they're parking. It's dangerous. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything for our attorney? All right, I'm gonna move to District Manager.
Hope, hopefully, we won't get the same Dear John letter our H O A got.
Well, uh, so, they are starting second round of the.
Oh, yeah, Commerce. West Link's Business Park is horrible.
Okay.
West Link's Business Park is horrible, they haven't touched anything there.
When is that again, Chris?
They started this last week, but they're on their way to get their second pass first.
Just do that much, can we come?
They haven't touched anything.
And Madam Chair, I would recommend cascading that out to H O A residents to, uh, insubordinate that as well.
And he actually already had something.
He's done?
Yes.
On the ball.
We got three, I mean, Spanish word, right?
Sure we did. Do we know it?
It's in your red column.
More an item for Chris. Good job getting ten thousand back, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye.
I think we'll get the balance.
We still are without. What are we doing as far as options?
We haven't started the options yet, but we can start.
Okay. I was going to ask the school, but that's waiting four years, too long.
Gateway High School slash District.
I'm sorry. Is this the school, the new building, to replace what we didn't acquire with the Girl Scout?
Public Works Manager.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Parks Manager. First one, I wanted to tell you real quick, Mr. Tinkler did have conversation with Lee County Solid Waste and did notify them about West Lakes being missed on the initial pass, and some of those, as you go down Commerce Lakes Drive and West Lakes, you'll see that they've spray painted some of the debris, I'm not sure, still have to call them back to see what the colors mean. They've painted them green and they've painted them yellow.
It's Christmas, is what it is.
Not sure what the colors mean, but they...
The decoration, that's how long it's going to be there.
They put fence material in.
That's an interesting thought. Did have an update for you on the Hurricane Irma cleanup costs. What I've written checks for with regards to light pole damage, all the landscaping, having trees cut, mainscape cleaning up, um, having net tower out there, we don't have the amount from them yet, fencing repairs, including utility fencing, and then all the signage that needs to be replaced, and I'm at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted, so, just to let you know, that did come to a sizable amount, and that didn't even include the amount that we received from Pelican, and that was an additional amount that adds on top of this. That's where... But that'll also be one of the things, as we move forward in, moving forward in the future years' budgets, is putting monies aside for storm cleanup, just to have it. Regarding the sign replacement, we went, I went through the final reviews with the sign manufacturers, the proofs, looking at everything, so they should be coming down. Hopefully, we'll get, we can get S T. to cut checks, we can get vendors down here to do their job. That's been a, just for you all to know, it's been a struggle trying to get some of our vendors paid that we're struggling with, with them.
On ours, on account of us?
No, it's not our fault, I mean, they're just slow in writing the checks to the vendors.
Our?
Vendors.
Our vendor.
That have done what?
S T.
Oh, no, our vendors that are doing work for us.
Okay, okay, okay. I was going to say, there shouldn't be any excuses to why we're holding up checks.
No, we're not, it's not, it's not the district. I wanted to let you know that to get the check in, oh, that was some bright news from S T., they did get us the check for the RV site plan, so I'll be giving that to Tyler, so he can submit the development order for the RV site, at the end of the road here. The wonderful folks from Bentley have started some work out there on Griffin. Not a lot of stuff going up vertical yet, but they are out there, have mobilized and starting to do some work with regards to the electrical conduit placement. And we will be, did some revisions to our landscaping contracts, and we'll be putting that out very shortly. We thought we were ready, then we talked internally and did some revisions to some of the duties that we're going to have the contractors do, so we're formalizing that, and then we'll be putting that on the street very shortly.
This is the contracted mainscape, is that?
Correct. For the next, for once their contract is up. We're also going to be contracting for lake maintenance, wetlands, and preserve areas. We're going to be changing, bringing contracts out for that also.
Mike, I have a question on that, it's directed at you and to Chris. With that type of bid, are we also assessing any potential transition to internal capability on small scales, even for a start?
I'll let Chris go ahead and address that.
Great, and I appreciate you being proactive in that, man.
And we can put your, use your garage to park all the equipment, so we don't have any place to put it.
And then after, I guess, after we take the break, I have some information for you just about the soccer complex and the usage charges sheet, I'll put it around eleven by seventeen, so it's a little bit easier to read.
Thank you.
That's not all I have.
Are we on track for the holiday party that was the last thing that was on your list, the Christmas event?
Yes, we have the event planner going, we're getting all of our checks from S T., we have most of them, and we're on track.
What's the date?
December first.
So, the party's going to be the first?
December first.
Thank you. Utility Manager.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. I just wanted to start off with, we sent Dave and Isaac out to class, this is their second class they have attended. We're shooting for thirty-two hours throughout the year, four classes, hopefully, we're going to get across. Dave went to class for lift station repairs, pumps, and electrical wiring, and Isaac went to his state certification, a four-day class over two weeks. He's now ready to take the state licensing exam. He won't be able to get his license in for, he'll have to do a year, but he is prepared now, and he's passed all the free requisites for the state licensing exam. Stern Brook Master Station, I've had Cummings out, and I had Thompson Pump out, I'm still waiting on Cummings' proposal for a generator at that master station. Thompson had come out and sized everything, that's going to be farther down the line, there's a lot of prep work and site work with that master station that we have to do before we put that Thompson Pump in there, or a diesel generator, or whichever way is the, will be the most efficient way to go. We are definitely going to have to put something in that lift station.
Do we have the land to do it?
For the Thompson Pump, nothing really has to change.
I mean, do we have an easement large enough that we can do it?
Yes, but for the generator, yeah, if we go with the generator, or the electric generator, for a, that is a two-hundred-and-thirty-volt station, so that generator gets big.
It's big.
As it gets bigger, and the fencing would have to be redone for, as part of that. He came out and did all the measurements, he still hasn't gotten back to me on the actual cost, this is the same guy that did the generator over in Pelican Preserve, same guy. And our irrigation, we've had, we ordered a brand-new pump about eight, I think it was eight weeks ago, it's in, ready to get installed, and we've, this, especially this month, Matarita has just turned out with odor issues. We were back about last year when I was field person, that was one of the things that I spent a great deal of time in, was Matarita flushing those lines. And now that it, that this last two weeks, we've gotten over fifteen, we had fifteen calls in one day about the odor issues in the Matarita session, and several spattering as they move into Preito, and, well, the story's not built up yet, we're having the same issue. A lot of the times, it, one bathroom in the house, the kitchen sink is fine, the bathroom is fine, the laundry is fine, but there's a smell in the back bathroom in the mornings, or whenever, I have smelt it. I dealt a lot with this last year when Chris was the utility manager, and we were spending a lot of time out there flushing, flushing those lines that really seemed to, after about two to three weeks of it, the complaints kind of go down, and it's the same complaint over and over and over again in the same spot.
Were these looped or dead-end lines?
Some of them were off of, especially last year, when I was doing it, they were on the dead ends.
Yeah, dead-end lines, you're going to have to...
Yeah, I mean, that's just a matter of course, quarterly, they recommend quarterly, doing it four times a year, we were doing it three times a week, just to get that, and as they built that Matarita too, we figured, or the Matarita, when they finally built it all out, we figured we'd have enough people in there pulling off that line, and it's not, I don't think it's enough, because we get a lot of seasonal people back, and it started this time last year, about the first of November, right after Halloween, and all of a sudden, we would just get fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen people calling throughout a week, where we would go out and do visits, and we would test the residual at the house, at the back, I mean, there's all kinds of, some people have put conditioners in, put water conditioners into their house and had them installed, and it's the same problem, it doesn't take care of the issue. We, what we did last year, when Chris was the utility manager, is we went out there and really aggressively flushed that place out pretty regularly for about four to five months, and it seemed to, Casella is, it was happening in Casella as well, and now we don't have anything in Casella that's coming out of Casella. As they move into Preito, we're still having that issue. And there is a smell, there is an odor, me and Chris have both smelled it, and Terry has smelled it, and it's just in the first, in the morning, in the back bathroom, or the master bedroom bathroom, you open it up, and there it is, and then it goes away, and then it's two days and nothing, and then one day a week, or every other week, or, or another one is the seasonal, we have a lot of seasonal people that come in, and as soon as they come in, I told the field staff to be prepared, we're going to get a lot of odor complaints, and it's always the back bathroom, or the master back, the kitchen will be fine, the water sitting in the toilets, they don't smell, the laundry doesn't smell, we, it's just that one, we don't, we don't really have an exact answer as to what it's, and it's only in Matarita and Pelican Preserve. But we have, we are really starting to flush aggressively again, and I anticipate by January, it'll probably just taper off again and go away like it did the last time, the new set, I think they had a meeting, and we've got a lot of calls, and it's the same call pretty much every time.
If you have the dead-end lines, it's like part of what you have to make it, because every single one of our streets, there's no loop, it's just dead ends.
Dead-end cul-de-sacs.
We do have one in Hampton Park on Farrington, and that's about a once a week, and if they have an issue, they'll call us, we go right out there, we flush it out, and we don't hear again, you know, we try to do it once a month, you know, but on a dead-end line, they recommend four times a year, but it doesn't seem to, that's all I have.
Heard anything, or got any update on how's our meter situation going, are they reading correctly, we having any errors or having to replace?
We've had quite a few, we've had quite a few dead M I U.s. again.
M I U.s. again?
As they come in, we just pack them up, send them back, and they, I think we're at three-hundred-and-forty-seven for the year right now.
Three-forty-seven for the year?
Yes, I believe, yes. This, this last fill cycle was the most we've had yet. Like I said, when we were going through that, it's trending up, it is definitely going back up, it went up, I believe, ninety-two is where we're staying at.
By any chance, did they cash the check yet?
The system is running great, I mean, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing, what we, what it was designed to do, but we're still having those.
M I U.s.
And it's now, you know, we get them to a certain extent, and then we send them to them, and they just send us back numbers.
Was there an increase in ones that failed, that sat underwater for a certain period of time?
That's one of the things we've been looking at, to what, that's what we were, we were planning, we were expecting that, because of the storm and for all the flooding, that they just sat underwater for all that time, but there, we haven't, we haven't got the complete number yet, they're still going over some of the, no reports.
Half of Gateway was underwater, so if we survive that...
And there's no pattern, there's no pattern, other than it was in the two thousand and fifteen install. Other than that, they're, you know, all over the place, there's no definite, but we were expecting that, as, for whatever reason, but it definitely spiked up these last two months.
I just wondered if that was part of the spike.
We were expecting something like that, and we were expecting a lot, also expecting a lot of damage that didn't really materialize, but this last cycle was the most we've ever we've had, ninety-two is the number total.
Those are two items. One, I just want to recognize Leslie, and it's probably her job, but it was definitely a benefit to me, she called me, I guess, two weeks, two weeks ago, or sent an email alerting me of one of my properties that the water level had increased, and I should probably check it out.
Consumption.
Yeah, yeah, and she said, "Based on the amount, it looks like you probably have a slow leak in one of your bathrooms." And so, I went out, took a look at it, sure enough, there was, and it's just a slow leak.
One hose connected to your neighbor.
No, not that time. So, I wanted to just not only recognize Leslie, but also, you know, staff, and it's not just me, I know that that's part of her day-to-day job, but that's a big value, to be able to alert residents when there's something significant like that, and in this case, it was small, but it could have been significant had I not been alerted, over time, it would have been substantial, so...
Two billing periods, it would have been substantial.
Yeah, so, you know, kudos to not only you and the staff, but to Leslie specifically. The other piece, you mentioned licenses, do we have any type of incentive for the completion of licenses or certification within staff?
I have been working on that, I was toying with the idea of making them blanketing, blanketing all the field people as field operators, and then tiering it, whereas a Level Two would be a license.
So, in other words, a pay increase?
Well, there's two, there's two options that I would just throw out there just for consideration, and I'm sure you're doing research on it, but anything that, I think the stipulation is either it is, was not required of the job, or if it was part of consideration that it would be completed at a certain time, or it's over and above the current requirement, we either look at incentivizing that as a pay increase, or I have seen it where there is a one-time payout for completions and certifications, so however creative you want to get, or which direction, I think it's a great thing, because in our organization and situation, we should be looking at opportunities to...
Cross-training.
Cross-train, and also organically develop our staff, and that's part of that continuing development program, and I think that's a really great incentive for staff, not only if you've got clear career development paths, but you also reward the steps, and even incentivize the continuing up skills of staff, so you've already considered that, I think that's fantastic.
We're considering just, I'm toying with making them all field operators in this tier, and if you get a license, you go to Tier Two, and, you know, something like that is what, both the organizations that I've worked with, that is exactly how they incentivize it, for every license or a level you went up, you know...
So, it's a combination of like, performance and what your certification, license rank?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions for Kenny?
And Well One has not been, we're just waiting on for the rehab on Well One, because it's not, and he's already, you know, he said, "Once it's rehabbed and back online, he'll come right back out and calibrate Number One," and they all, the big twenty-four-inch meter was calibrated, and it was ten thousand gallons, forty-five gallons per ten thousand gallons, there's like, less than one percent off, so he's on it.
Chris, in regards to, just in that same theme, are there certain, I don't know if you call them recognition or awards, in the kind of utilities area, I know sometimes you have to submit an application to be considered for certain things, and not that I'm, you know, looking to get recognition, but I think we need to understand the work that we're doing, and the significance that it has on our district, but it's sometimes those accolades that are really important, and we can echo that back to the residents to show we are being recognized for the work that's being done, and it's quantifiable at that point, so I don't know if there's any out there, I was just kind of throwing out there, if there are, I think we need to be researching it and submitting whatever.
For irrigation, yes, absolutely, for reuse system, because the district has upgraded, we're so far along in our upgrading of that irrigation system, that so was so, a lot of it was really outdated, and then over the last two years, year and a half, we've really, we're almost there, we got the one pump in, and we have two more out of a series of five, so we'll have five brand-new pumps at the end of it, with O S and Y valves and the whole, the reuse, most definitely D E P would.
Yeah, celebrate and communicate those successes as often as you can, because it's, that's really good information for the residents to be able to say, "Hey, this is tangible for me, I understand where the money's going, and with recent events, that work has paid off," so just give you that little bit of, I don't know if it's advice or just recommendation.
I'm going to call for a five-minute.
I've got the peanut M and Ms. in my car.
I love peanuts, but I've grown allergic to them, and the last six years, I've grown...
Thank you.